Evening, everyone.
Mr. Mayor.
Sorry about this. Dave, I'm gonna, I'm gonna text Carol real quick just for the city commission. Well, just to have her email it to me, the calendar invites, I don't know if it's something on my computer or what. Or maybe she can hear me.
I can. What, what do you need, Mayor?
Uh, can you just email me the link to the regular city commission meeting? The same one?
It's the same one, so just. Yeah, I didn't want to have you guys have to log off and log back on and risk a problem with anybody with connectivity.
Okay, perfect. That's perfect. I just, uh, I don't know what was happening. Okay, well, it's 6:34. I apologize about being a little tardy. Um, there's a request has been made to go into closed session to discuss collective bargaining. Um, is there a motion? A motion by Commissioner Perush. I saw a second by Commissioner Douglas. We'll do a vote across the, um, board here. Commissioner Lavassar?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Hi.
Mr. Perush?
Yes.
Excuse me, Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
All right, that's six yes, and I vote yes. We're in closed session. Well, hello there, everyone. Same face is different order. Let's see. All right, um, what we are gonna do now is, um, we're still in closed session. We're back from recess. I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn closed session and resume the public meeting. Is there a motion? See, a motion by Commissioner Perush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Uh, we'll, at the top as I see them, Commissioner Douglas?
Hi.
Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavassar?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, we've now exited from closed session. Uh, Mr. Gillum, please allow us, uh, inform us when we are good to go to resume the remaining part of our, uh, public meeting.
Mayor Fonye, we're live on WROK now.
Thank you, Ms. Schwanger. Welcome, everybody. We appreciate you tuning in tonight. Um, we had a closed session earlier and we're now resuming the meeting, which is now our public part of, uh, tonight's meeting. Um, I'm gonna begin, uh, by asking Commissioner Dubak to perform an invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Dubak?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, tonight we gather as our city, our state, our nation, and much of the world continue to grapple with a health crisis, the likes of which hasn't been seen in many generations. Throughout of COVID-19 and the steps we've taken as a people to protect ourselves and our loved ones from it, has had and will have, uh, continue to have wide raging impact on each of us and our families. And you'd think that in such a stressful, disorienting, frustrating, and uncertain situation, you'd see a breakdown in our sense of community. Uh, but to the contrary, while there's, there's certainly been some ugliness, what we've seen mostly on, on full display as we've gone through this together, has been an increased sense of community. You don't have to look far on any given day to see beautiful expressions of love, support, togetherness, and courage. And I like to think that's because while there may be some disagreement about how to move forward, which of course there's going to be, as we're all in very uncharted territory. In spite of that, there's an overwhelming sense that we're all in this together. And as we make decisions about our shared future, we all ultimately want the same things. We want our kids, our parents, our grandparents to be healthy and happy. We want to protect our most vulnerable and plan for a prosperous future. And we want to leave an even stronger community for those who come after us. This is a hard time, but if we can carry that sense of community and togetherness into everything we do at this table, and as a city, we will be that much stronger and prepared for whatever else comes our way. Um, with that, I hope all the moms out there had a wonderful Mother's Day weekend.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Dubak. We are gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance now. I ask that if you can stand, please do so. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. All right, I'm gonna, as Chair of the meeting here, I am gonna exercise a little bit of privilege just to give some updates related to, you know, COVID-19's impact in our community and some of the things that the city's doing and again, reminding folks, uh, if they need help, uh, where they can get it. Um, you know, construction on City Hall is back underway as well as a police station. Uh, we fully intend on moving into those buildings this year. However, uh, we are planning accordingly and, and looking at different ways to serve the public, not just better as we intended, but also in light of some of the conditions we're facing right now. Um, so plans are being put in place to, to look at things similar to what you might see at the Secretary of State as far as scheduling appointments. Um, what that looks like, not just in terms of the digital infrastructure, but as well as the physical infrastructure in the building, and how to really not just make the experience safer for all of our, um, residents, um, and employees, but also more convenient and, um, and better. Um, we will, as time goes on and as we get guidance from the county and the state, and as opening, reopening plans and recovery plans start to get put in place, you'll start to notice signage around the city. Behind the scenes, we're looking at the various different constant relations of what that could look like. Everything from how do you behave in an elevator, uh, to, um, how do you use our parking garages, whatever it may be. Um, we're gonna make sure that people are not just reminded, but they're informed, uh, at, you know, the place that they're at. Uh, how to properly, properly physically, uh, distance themselves to make sure that we continue to keep everyone safe until, um, you know, this pandemic, uh, finally retires. Um, we have been adding more and more resources to romi.gov. Uh, if you haven't had an opportunity to, to go to romi.gov and find, uh, whether you're a small business, whether you are, um, a concerned resident, whether you're a worker, whatever it may be, I encourage you, uh, to go to romi.gov to get the latest and greatest information about what's happening in Royal Oak related to COVID-19, but also some resources that we can direct you to, to help you with every issue you may have. Um, so far, we've been successful with our helpline and neighbor-to-neighbor program. We've been able, for example, to nearly a hundred people have been put into contact with various food banks, whether it be the firefighters, um, in their food drive that they put on, um, a while back, or, you know, the Salvation Army, uh, and many other food banks, uh, that we have here in the area. Uh, making sure we're connecting the nonprofits with the people in need and kind of being that clearinghouse. And I gotta applaud, uh, Carol Schwanger and Judy Davids for taking point on that. They've been fielding a lot of the calls, uh, not just with food, but if people need face masks, whatever issue they may have, uh, they can just call 248-246-3200. And we will find, uh, a way to help you, whether it's us or whether it's somebody in the community that's already providing the service that you need. Please do not hesitate to call. Like Commissioner Dubak said, we are a community. We're all in this together. Uh, we may not have, um, every play on our website, uh, and that's why we have the City Hall line where you can call and make sure that whatever your need is, we'll figure out the best way to get you the help you need. We got actor, good actors stepping up all over the community. Um, just recently, I wanna call out Toyology, one of our vibrant downtown businesses. Um, they're actually donating some puzzles and brain games to some of the assisted living, uh, facilities here in Royal Oak, uh, to help our seniors cope with some of the social distance that they've had to endure, uh, during this time, uh, being away from loved ones and relatives that would normally, um, you know, be able to spend more time with them. And so, uh, we're finding, uh, countless ways that businesses and residents are stepping up. Um, and I just wanna remind everybody, uh, whether you're a worker, um, or you're showing symptoms, um, Oakland County, uh, in Pontiac is still doing testing. And, um, I recommend if you are showing any symptoms, or if you're a worker in Oakland County and a central worker and feel the need to be tested, um, you just have to make an appointment. There's no cost. Uh, the number is 800-848-5533. And that's the nurse on call for Oakland County. So, call the nurse on call for any non-emergency issue. Uh, but also if you need and feel that you have to be tested, uh, please do that. I'd also like to make sure everyone is aware that, you know, the city is working, uh, with our small businesses. Todd Fenton, uh, is working, uh, closely with a number of our small businesses, the DDA. You've seen a lot of things, uh, as we, as we look for business support as well as, um, what this recovery is going to look like. Uh, I serve on the Oakland County Recovery Task Force, um, along with a number of other people in the county. And I can tell you, the county is committed to making sure that, you know, not only are the people of Oakland County safe, uh, but that when it is time, uh, to, to open up, when it's safe to open up, that we hit the ground running. And so, uh, the city, to the capacity and to the level that we can, I know our staff is working on a number of things behind the scenes as well. Received a number of emails related to, um, you know, sidewalk cafes and, you know, closing down Main Street and, and Washington or whatever it may be to help our restaurants, um, putting up tents and, um, parking lots of restaurants to help, you know, um, make everyone more viable. All of these things are under consideration, um, that, you know, the city, from the police chief to Tim Twing to Mr. Gillum are taking a look at. Uh, and so, you know, while we don't have an exam, exact answer at the exact time, all the time, uh, we are in the process of planning. So when we do get the green light, um, we can do it correctly. We, you know, these things take time. You gotta talk to a lot of the business owners, restaurants, et cetera, uh, to make sure we're comprehending all the inputs. So, um, I'm very optimistic of the work that our team is doing, uh, not just to help us get through this pandemic, but when it is safe to open, that we hit the ground running. So, again, I just, one more number. I wanna make sure if you need anything, you're tuning in tonight, and you need anything, um, please call us at 248-246-3200. And we can help you or direct you to someone who can help you with your need, whether that be food, um, hygiene products, uh, whatever it may be, a mask, you need a cloth-made mask, let us know. We're here to help. Thank you. So that brings us to item number four on the agenda, which is the 2020 Census Complete Count Committee Update. I see Ms. Beach is online. Ms. Beach, the floor is yours.
Hello.
Hi.
Okay, um, yeah, thank you for, uh, for allowing me some time on the agenda tonight. Uh, I just wanted to update the commission on, uh, where we are with the complete count. The committee has been tracking response rates from Michigan, uh, from Michigan since the middle of April, and they have been rising each week. Thus far, we are pleased with the response, but know that we can still do better. The current overall response rate for Michigan is 65.3. Uh, Oakland County is 73.5, and Royal Oak is 76.9, you know, which is, uh, is a good achievement, especially considering the issues with COVID virus. Um, Royal Oak is segmented into 18 geographic census tracts, and the response rates range from 66% to 84.9. So you can see there's a lot of variability there. 14 of the census tracts are above 75%, but we do have a few outliers at 66 and 67%. Um, there are a few census tracts that are above the 2010 response rates, so we're finding that to be very encouraging. What we are seeing now is the initial returns where those that responded online. But we're beginning to see the mail-in responses now, and I'm sure there was a delay in that just due to the coronavirus and what the, uh, what the Census Bureau was trying to deal with. Um, we've been analyzing the data and noting that the census tracts that have the lowest response rate, and our next step is to target those census tracts specifically, which include those hard to count and in areas where there are many apartments. So what are we doing to improve the count? First of all, I wanna thank Carol Schwanger and Judy Davids for the great social media campaign that they have been doing. I mean, you can't open up any Royal Oak website and not see something about the census, so they've been doing a great job. We are currently looking into the possibility of robocalling, since we have some people that do not have access to the, um, computers, and that may be another way to reach them. Uh, people need to know also that the deadline for the census has been extended to October 31st, 2020. Uh, the committee has developed a new yard sign to be concentrated in those low-response-rate census tracts. Um, and it will include a note on there. It'll look a little bit different, and it'll include a note that the, uh, that the deadline has been extended. Um, and then we will distribute these as soon as we receive them. Uh, households who have not yet responded will receive another reminder postcard in the mail between April 27th and May 9th from the Census Bureau. And we're also updating our frequently asked questions, since several things have changed due to the coronavirus. And feature, and then we'll feature different questions that we've received as a committee. Um, I think the committee is optimistic that Royal Oak will finish the 2020 census strong with the collaboration of the city and the residents, but we can't get the message out there too often.
Almost on mute. Thank you, Ms. Beach. Uh, does anyone have any questions for Ms. Beach? Mr. Macy?
Um, how are you reaching the people who don't have, um, steady housing? Is there something, I know there had been a plan to kind of be, uh, out walking, and I wonder if that's changed now?
Yeah, uh, they have extended the, the dates for when they will be doing the, uh, locking the neighborhoods. Um, each state is being handled differently. They're still hiring, and there has been, uh, several ads about them hiring for, to do that work. Um, my understanding here in Michigan, it's gonna happen in June, starting in June. Other states have already begun that work.
Mr. Douglas?
And are there protocols in place for, I mean, will you be knocking on doors of people that haven't responded? And is the Census Bureau put into place protocols for, I mean, how to do this in a time of pandemic?
Yes. Oh, yes, they have. Um, if you go to the, the 2020census.gov website, has tremendous resources there, and they are, and ask, answering all those questions. The, um, they have updates probably at least once a week, and the dates keep changing, so we might even see another variation in some of the dates. So, that website has been very, very useful to us, and we're finding some of those questions that people still have about the census. I mean, things like the kids that were at university, uh, who were on campus, they should still be counted, you know, at their web, or at their address at campus. And the, um, universities are in charge of collecting that data. So, those are some of the questions that have been come up, you know, that have come up and that we've been able to answer. So we're still available. If people have other questions, we're happy to, uh, respond to any of those questions.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Ms. Beach, did I hear the number correctly? So far have a 76% response rate in the city of Royal Oak, both zip codes?
Correct. Correct.
So I think all of us here, as well as, um, you know, um, those who are tuning in, if we all ask four people, we're likely to identify one person that hasn't responded yet. So, if we, in the next couple of weeks, if we try to reach out, all of us, uh, as a community, reach out to at least four people, talking to them on the phone, uh, you know, I wouldn't say seeing them in the street, but, you know, if you're meeting with somebody, uh, via email or via Zoom or whatever, um, we all just reach out to four people, uh, to remind them personally, that might, you know, help tick that 76% up a little bit. So, um, once again, Ms. Beach, we thank you and the committee for all the fine work you're doing. Clearly, um, you know, you guys are, uh, a well-oiled machine here out of the gate. Uh, and, you know, the numbers are show and promise comparatively to the county and to the state, which is a testament to the work you're doing. And, um, you know, we look forward to, uh, closing that gap even further. So thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, this brings us to item number five, uh, the Police Department 2019 Annual Awards. Uh, typically, this is something that we do in person. It's a lot of fun. Um, and it's great to see everyone and hear the stories, uh, but this time we're gonna be doing it remotely. So, um, Chief O'Donoghue.
Hey, Mayor, City Commission. Uh, yep, it's very disappointing we have to do it in this fashion. We are hoping to do some sort of reception for the officers and their families. Once, um, things get back to normal, we can start hanging out together again. But, um, if you, if you could bear with me, I'm gonna go through the awards, our 2019, um, accommodations. Uh, the first set is, uh, bravery for Lieutenant Stanton, Sergeant Platt, Officer Nodle, Officer Hetner, Officer Stanishevsky, and a meritorious service award for PSA's Cameron and Cherry. On December 3rd, 2019, police officers responded at 4,900 block of Fernley Avenue regarding a suicidal subject armed with a rifle. The subject was reporting he intended to engage in responding officers with the rifle and commit suicide by cop. As officers responded, PSA Cameron maintained a phone conversation with the subject and obtained significant information about his intentions against the officers. PSA Cameron remained calm, developed a report with the subject, and learned critical information. PSA Cherry monitored developments and provided key, provided key information immediately to the officers on scene. As officers arrived, the subject began approaching the immediate positions of Lieutenant Stanton and Officer Nodle while armed with his rifle. From a distance approximately only 15 feet, the subject made repeated verbal threats combined with movements of his body and his weapon in an attempt to force Lieutenant Stanton or Officer Nodle to shoot him. Despite the imminent verbal and physical threat of deadly force made by the subject, both Stanton and Nodle remained calm and exhibited tremendous restraint in not engaging. The subject in close proximity, Sergeant Platt, Hetner, and Officer Stanishevsky provided cover while also recognizing the threat of crossfire present to both themselves and Lieutenant Stanton and Nodle. All officers on, all, all on scene personnel remain calm, professional demeanor throughout this standoff, and prevented this situation from escalating. Upon completion of the close proximity standoff, PSA Cameron reestablished contact with the subject and utilized his report to help de-escalate the situation. Um, with the SWAT team now in position, PSA Cameron convinced the subject to enter the building unarmed. The subject complied and was taken into custody without incident. As a result of the excellent teamwork restraint and continued de-escalation attempts, police officers and PSAs were able to safely bring this dangerous incident to a conclusion without harm to the suspect, officers, or the public. Um, we're up, during this incident, I'd also like to recognize Lieutenant Ray Fries from the Birmingham Police Department. He also responded, uh, to this scene, and he has offered his services as a trained negotiator. Uh, we were able to patch Lieutenant Fries in with the ongoing phone conversation between the subject and our dispatch. For well over 15 minutes, Lieutenant developed a report with the subject and calmly continued his attempts to get the suspect to surrender. As the negotiation progressed, the suspect terminated a phone call and began advancing towards the officers. Approximately 15 minutes, a close proximity armed standoff occurred between the suspect and ROPD officers. Uh, despite this, Lieutenant remained calm and kept the subject verbally engaged while relaying to Lieutenant Stanton and Nodle, uh, relying on Lieutenant Stanton and Nodle to provide cover. Despite the suspect's immediate threat to shoot the officers, Lieutenant calmly continued to verbally engage the suspect in an attempt to de-escalate the standoff. Lieutenant's negotiation and de-escalation efforts were a significant contribution to the overall team effort that brought this dangerous incident to a safe conclusion. Next up, I have a meritorious service award for Officers Nodle and Snyder. On February 23rd, 2019, the Royal Oak Police Department responded, uh, to, responded to pedestrians intentionally, to two pedestrians potentially struck by a motor vehicle. Approximately 20 hours later, Officers Nodle and Snyder located a possible vehicle matching the description of the wanted vehicle. The officers also observed the driver matched to the suspect description during the traffic stop. Officers Nodle and Snyder obtained an admission from the driver that he was responsible for the vehicular assault. Their field investigation also uncovered significant physical evidence on and within the suspect vehicle. As a result of this, their investigation, suspect was charged with felonious assault. Next up, I have a life-saving award for Sergeant Tyson and Sergeant Stich, or I'm sorry, Officer Stich. On February 22nd, 2019, uh, police officers responded to a suicide by hanging. Officer, Sergeant Tyson and Officer Stich found the victim distraught, sister weeping by the front door. The officers discovered the victim hanging by a leather belt nailed to the ceiling post. The officers quickly learned that the victim was still warm and immediately used teamwork to cut him down. Sergeant Tyson and Officer Stich immediately began life-saving measures, including CPR and applying an AED. They continued life-saving measures, and the victim regained a pulse, uh, approximately 20 minutes later. The victim was transported to Beaumont Hospital by the Royal Oak Fire Department. The quick actions of both Sergeant Tyson and Officer Stich resulted in the victim's life being saved. I have a meritorious service award for Officers Cantonese and Elrod. On May 21st, 2019, the Ferndale Police Department reported an armed robbery at the 7-Eleven convenience store where the suspect displayed a handgun. Officers Cantonese and Elrod responded to Ferndale to assist. They located the suspect hiding in bushes near a residence and held him at gunpoint. The suspect was ignored in the officer's commands and began turning away, reaching for his waistband. Officers Cantonese and Elrod quick, quickly delivered a front kick, causing the suspect to fall to the ground before being able to retrieve his gun. The suspect continued to resist arrest and continually reached for his gun. Officers Cantonese and Elrod were eventually able to handcuff the suspect and discovered a loaded handgun in his front pocket. As a result of Officers Cantonese and Elrod's decisive action, an armed and dangerous suspect was taken off the street and charged with armed robbery. I have a meritorious service award for Detective Hill. You'll hear his name a lot today. Uh, on, in March of 2019, a concerned citizen shared a Snapchat video showing two unknown individuals driving in circles around Officers Kavanaugh and Sage, who were investigating a traffic crash. The video showed the passenger in the vehicle, uh, directing the driver to roll down the window as he displayed and pointed a firearm towards the officer. The video showed the suspects were clearly threatening the lives of the officers and encouraging viewers to engage in violence against police. Detective Hill used several extremely clever investigative techniques to identify and locate the suspects. Detective Hill then used extraordinary methods in, in interviewing the suspects and obtained incriminating statements from both suspects. Another meritorious award for Detective Hill, in January of 2019, Detective Hill investigated a stalking incident. The victim reported her stalker had been harassing her for over a decade and had followed her through several interstate moves. Detective Hill identified the suspect and noted he currently lived in Indiana. Detective Hill coordinated with law enforcement agencies in Indiana and executed a search warrant at the suspect's home in Indiana. Detective Hill interviewed the suspect and obtained a confession where he admitted to compiling a database of over 10,000 women who he was stalking. The suspect was ultimately charged with a felony aggravated, uh, stalking and extradited, uh, extradited to Michigan. Uh, another meritorious award for Detective Hill, in November of 2019, Detective Hill initiated an investigation into a suspect who's actively preying on Royal Oak students. Detective Hill coordinated his investigation with multiple other law enforcement agencies, including the Michigan State Police, the FBI, and the Pickens County Sheriff's Office of Georgia. Detective Hill spearheaded the execution of a search warrant into the predator's home and recovered a computer and two cell phones. Detective Hill completed the undesirable task of identifying hundreds of illicit images of children used as evidence against this suspect. Um, Detective Hill also interviewed the suspect for several hours and was able to obtain incriminating statements used to prosecute the suspect in Georgia. Detective Hill obtained a multiple felony charges against the suspect, including aggravated child sexually abusive activity using a computer, a computer to commit a crime, which carry a maximum penalty of life in prison. I have a certificate of accommodation for Officers DeSano and Stairs. On July 18th, 2019, Officers DeSano and Stairs issued a bicyclist for riding in the middle of the street. Approximately 20 minutes, 20 minutes later, a Approximately 20 minutes, 20 minutes later, a nearby business was broken into with several items stolen. During the investigation of the break-in, the officers obtained video and determined the suspect matched that of the bicyclist. Approximately 24 hours later, Officers DeSano and Stairs located the suspect and took him into custody for the burglary. As a result of the proactive police work of Officers DeSano and Stairs, this crime was quickly solved and almost certainly prevented future burglaries in the city of Royal Oak. I have a unit citation for Lieutenant Renaud, Detective Murray, Officer Cantonese, Officer Nodle, Officer Stanishevsky, Officer Spears, Officer Elrod, Officer Andrenos, Officer Hetner, PSA McNeil, PSA Williams, and Cadet Hertz. On May 29th, 2019, officers responded to a large fight with shots fired in the area of Hamlin Corner. Officers located the suspect vehicle that uh, immediately fled at an extremely high rate of speed, nearly striking an officer on foot. The officers pursued the vehicle uh, for approximately one mile until it crashed. The driver fled, fled from the crash scene and was apprehended on foot a short, after a short foot chase. The passenger had to be removed from the suspect vehicle which was engulfed in flames and was taken into custody. This was a very chaotic and uh, difficult scene, but the dedication, professionalism, and restraint displayed by the officers in this incident resulted in the shooting suspect being apprehended and the firearm in progress. I have another unit citation for Sergeant Brown, Sergeant Barokie, Sergeant Budzynelski, Officer DeSano, Officer Elrod, Officer Cosmac, Officer Moran, Officer Cantonese, Officer Miller, Officer Stanishevsky, Officer Snyder, Officer Clement, Officer Love, Officer Stugling, Officer Nodle, Officer Sergeant Francis, Officer Spears, PSA Cameron, and PSA Page. On February 22nd, 2019, the Royal Oak Police Department responded to three significant incidents with professionalism and great points. During the span of two hours and 20 minutes, the sergeants, officers, and PSA's responded to a suicide in which a subject um, leapt from the top of a parking structure, a train versus pedestrian fatal accident, and a felonious assault of two pedestrians in a vehicle. All three incidences occurred within a few blocks of each other. The listed personnel managed all these complicated scenes, displayed uh, tremendous teamwork and calmness under extreme pressure. I have a unit citation for Detective Beretto, Detective Peltier, Detective Hill, Detective Baringa, Detective Murray, Detective Wood, and Detective Nelson. On January 17th, 2020, police officers responded to welfare check request by family members. The elderly victim was found deceased and bound inside the home. As the investigation quickly progressed, the victim's vehicle was spotted earlier that day in Marion County and possibly being driven, being driven by the victim's son. His information was being developed to locate the vehicle and the person driving it. Uh, investigators determined the victim's son was the primary suspect in the case. After a lengthy pursuit generated from Grashit County where the vehicle and the son was uh, later found, he was taken into custody in Livingston County. During the subsequent three days, Detectives Beretto for the Detective Bureau conducted multiple hours of follow-up investigation and discovered the facts surrounding this incident. Information and evidence was obtained from multiple sources throughout the state, including the home of, of the, including the home of the incident, businesses in Oakland County, Grashit, Marion County, and several other sources. Investigators composed multiple search warrants and culled through hundreds of pages of reports and information obtained from 40 individuals and over 30 law enforcement officials from 12 agencies throughout the state. The tenacity and thoroughness of the members of the Royal Oak Police Department's Criminal Investigation Division resulted in the suspect, in the suspect, the son of the victim, being arraigned just four days after, four days later for the premeditated murder of his father. Um, we have our civilian of the year award and this goes to Rob Spelman, who's our part-time property officer. Rob Spelman took over responsibility for the property room and evidence storage in 2016 and immediately began making improvements. He has quickly educated himself in all aspects of his job. Rob ensures that the department adheres to the proper retention laws and evidence storage and destruction and maintains a very organized property room. Rob provides a valuable service to the Criminal Investigation Division by transporting and retrieving evidence from multiple laboratories and ensuring items are properly packaged. He also routinely trains officers on the proper methods, methods of packaging evidence and maintaining the overall integrity of the chain of evidence. Rob maintains meticulous reports, participates in a yearly property room audits, and ensures the integrity of all evidence and property within the police department without incident. Rob has also been an integral part in the design of the new police station. He has offered valuable suggestions to streamline procedures to make the department more efficient. Above all else, Rob maintains a positive and professional demeanor and is always willing to help. Um, we have a community service award for Lieutenant Carter and Sergeant Cantonese. Lieutenant and Sergeant Cantonese organized and oversaw the 2019 Citizens Police Academy. The Royal Oak Police Department Citizens Police Academy is an eight-week program that officers, that offers a group of Royal Oak residents a chance to interact with officers and learn about policing. This program is a great means of building and enhancing community relations and trust. Many attendees of this year's program both praised Lieutenant Carter and Sergeant Cantonese for their dedication to the program. They both exhibited exemplary efforts towards making this, making, making this Michigan's premier police department. I would point out, uh, both these officers really connect with everyone that comes to these citizen police academies and they regularly come to visit them and they stop by all the time. It's, it's really nice. Our Citizen Police Academy alumni group uh, really is a special group that uh, keeps in contact with us all year long. Uh, finally, um, I have our officer of the year. It should come as no surprise. It's uh, Detective Jamie Hill. Jamie Hill consistently demonstrates professionalism, commitment, and service to the police department. He's a valued member of the police, he's a valued member of the agency and is a mentor to newer investigators and police officers. He maintains a positive attitude and consistently offers ideas to improve police practices. Detective Hill has built and maintained working relationships with outside law enforcement agencies. He has relied on these contacts to assist the police department with several complex organizations uh, this year. Uh, all of, many of which I, I just, I just went over with you. Uh, several of these cases were featured on multiple news agencies and demonstrated to the entire public the quality and professionalism of the Royal Oak Police Department. Um, you know, I, I would just point out, in law enforcement, every so often, um, you really get an opportunity to make a significant positive impact in someone's life. And uh, you know, one of these cases in particular was a stalking complaint. Um, I, I can't emphasize enough what a great job he did and what a meaningful impact he made in this victim's life. Uh, this woman had, had moved out of state, had changed her name, and there were a number of years where uh, this individual couldn't find her. When he, when he finally did find her, she called the Royal Oak Police Department. She's been making reports for 10 years. It wasn't until she became a victim in Royal Oak that we were able to put an end to it. Uh, there's no question with what we found at his house. Um, this individual was not on any police radar. He had over 10,000 victims. Uh, there were some indications that he was uh, moving to really escalate his activity and uh, you know, we've turned him over obviously to federal authorities to really delve into everything else he's doing, but um, doing a case that's out of state is very, very challenging and uh, Detective Hill just has a way of uh, getting these other agencies to cooperate because you basically, you're calling somebody up and you're having them do a lot of things on a case that they might not necessarily be into. And uh, you know, he's well-deserving this officer of the year and I can't speak highly of him. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief O'Donohue, and thank you to all our award winners uh, uh, this year. I mean, I, I'm just always amazed and I think our community at large is amazed at the professionalism, dedication, and bravery that we have in the Royal Oak Police Department. Um, and it's just, it's humbling to see, you know, it's, it's, you can look and read a brief in the newspaper, but when you really start to put the, you know, you get to meet the folks in the, in our police department, you get to see everything it takes to solve it, it's everything it takes to manage a, a crisis situation. Uh, in some cases, three situations at once. Um, it's really a testament to the culture and character of those who are serving the citizens of Royal Oak and our hats off to you, uh, to every police officer and especially for those who, um, you know, were awarded these awards tonight.
Thank you.
All right, well, this brings us to, it, it's a little hard to do the, uh, to move because typically it's, it's a very exciting time in City Hall when we give these awards. So this is an awkward transition for me because the, the handshaking, the, you know, the applause, everybody uh, in City Hall. Uh, you know, it's really a moment and so um, this is very difficult to transition into the next topic for me anyhow. I'm sure you guys all feel the same way. Um, so this is gonna be, we're on item number six on our agenda tonight, which is public comment. Um, like we've done the last uh, number of um, uh, remote meetings. We've uh, taken the public comment uh, before and via phone and we will play it back. Um, Mr. Gillen informed us earlier that we have about three messages from our last meeting uh, that we'll be playing first. Uh, we didn't expect uh, when we signed up for the software that we would hit our capacity of 100 um, uh, calls, uh, of which we did uh, last uh, time we met. So we're gonna play those three and then we'll go into the ones that we received today earlier for public comment. So, uh, Ms. Schwanger, um, Richard, we're ready when you are. Am I the only one that can't hear anything or have we not started? Okay.
Sorry, my, forgot to stop. Let me go back. Royal Oak resident. I'm calling because I read with great disgust that there is an agenda item to discuss censuring a fellow elected commissioner member under the guise of violating her oath of office. What is really rich is that this censure is sponsored by three commissioners who thought so little of honoring their own oath to our city charter that they decided in 2017, it was okay to ignore our charter's debt limit to approve $58 million in bonds for the city center project without a vote of the people. A charter requirement if you want to increase the city's debt limit. Some of you, including the mayor, have violated your oath when you voted for this debt in violation of the procedures required by our charter. Since some of you seem to have double standards when it comes to upholding your oath of office, I am requesting on behalf of all Royal Oak residents that if you plan on voting to censure Commissioner Gibbs, that you add on tonight's agenda an item to discuss the censure of yourself. Furthermore, I am asking all who voted to increase our debt limit without a vote of the people to resign. Your irresponsible action not only has put our entire city in financial peril that will most likely lead to increased taxes or reduced city services, but it was also a clear violation of your oath of office to honor our city charter. This is in stark contrast to Commissioner Gibbs' actions of attending a peaceful protest in Lansing on her own personal time and a constitutional right afforded to her. Ms. Gibbs' actions did not disenfranchise Royal Oak citizens of their rights or generate a situation where residents are going to face real, not imagined or made up threats to their lives. To those of you who voted to extend our debt limit over the charter limit, your behavior really will have an impact on Royal Oak residents in terms of increased taxes and or reduced city services. And if following the oath is still important to you now, perhaps you should look in the mirror and if you were willing to step down, maybe then you could have some legitimacy to ask Commissioner Gibbs to do the same. At least Commissioner Gibbs can rely upon the First Amendment, which protects her right to free speech and assembly. What's your excuse? Thank you.
It's wonderful, the news reported that the ROPD chief has fully recovered from COVID-19. No one likes hearing someone has contracted this dreaded disease or they've exposed others. Most COVID-19 patients are contagious many weeks after their illness. Unfortunately, the ROPD chief and administrator exposed 15 people to COVID-19. I hope the 15 people will and they're quarantining themselves, not exposing anyone in our community. Mayor's public flogging and fellow Commissioner Gibbs is to stay full in the light of true tragedy that encompasses our world impacting lives of Royal Oak citizens. Why pursue this grieving, struggling people or something? I respectfully request you, the commission as a whole, concern yourselves only with the welfare of Royal Oak citizens instead of inciting more fear in our community. The commission needs to put their collective energies into healing, not hating. Most vulnerable senior citizen wellness calls for individual seniors, not welfare checks as an afterthought from a concerned relative. Royal Oak needs a strategic plan for the senior city apartment building if the COVID-19 pandemic takes hold in the buildings. Commissioners, have you prepared a strategic plan for the total economic shift after the pandemic? This economic shift has written the fact that contagious and upgraded the pandemic itself. A stronghold like Beaumont is furloughing 2,500 workers, the 450 employees losing their jobs permanently already. The mayor chose to engage in political jealousy with this Gibbs. In show of lack of concern and appetite, it was expected all Royal Oak citizens of his friends, crass, vulgar, and truly politically obvious, whose attention they are. The whole situation could have been quickly remedied by quietly acting this gives to quarantine for 14 days. Also, I'd like to mention, Ms. Douglas has clearly violated Royal Oak's ethical ordinance by using the city's email system to explicitly ask people to vote for Mr. Jacob over Chapter 66, Article H. I respectfully request the mayor act from the Douglas residence for those unsavory unethical behavior. These are trying times. The city commissioners should be making prudent and wise decisions as a whole for the better of our community. Fortunately, all this tomfoolery has wasted precious time and spelled a political double standard. Time for you folks to get your heads on straight and get to work for a bit of all of us, not just your own selfish political ambitions.
Mike Shunk, it's wonderful. This is Commissioner Horsky by SSIS 227 East 12 Mile Road, Royal Oak, Michigan. I am the chairman of the Professional Creation and Senior Service Committee. I was contacted last Thursday evening by a resident liaison of Durham Tower. She was having a problem with her residents not fully understanding the importance of to be socially distanced. And she was reaching out to the city for some kind of reinforcement that we could offer. I was able to contact Commissioner Macy and within 18 hours sometime Friday afternoon that she was able to get a representative of the police department out to the building to just remind the residents about the importance and the necessity to socially distance from each other. I just want to thank Commissioner Macy for her quick and swift action.
This is Suzanne Hayward and I want to voice my opinion. I am very disappointed that we stopped planning on having the 2022 dream cruise. I do not feel this will be a safe environment and even if the COVID-19 virus is brought under control by August, the shoulder-to-shoulder contact with many people from outside of Michigan will definitely be a breeding ground to reignite the pandemic. This is not safe for Royal Oak citizens, especially those of us living along the Woodward Corridor. We already have to deal with loud wasting cars and motorcycles all year long, but now the rest to our health. I feel this is not a sound decision and hope and pray that this decision will be reconsidered. I'm, I am all for businesses being able to open up safely in the very near future, but this kind of gathering is not safe. This is the perfect time to end this and thank you for your consideration.
My name is Jim Bertrand. I would like to thank you for your service. I'm a lifelong Royal Oak resident. My questions relative to the Royal Oak service. I'm a lifelong Royal Oak resident. My question is relative to the wireless service infrastructure in the city. As I'm sure you know, there are thousands of studies backed me the adverse effects of wireless radiation. DNA damage and cancer causing carcinogens, today two of the more notable ones. Particularly closer you are to landing access point. My request to view as the civil servants and representatives of the people of a fiduciary responsibility. To direct us or provide us with resources regarding plans of implementation of these, uh, services moving forward. So we can take action to protect our families accordingly. Where can I get information about the direct location or spots currently in the city that support wireless? And or five G, uh, infrastructure? And maybe more importantly, or equally asked, the future plans for implementation? We've all seen a work that has been completed along 12 mile where the new rights have been implemented by Dan Zestre. Was this work relating to five G or wireless infrastructure of the city? Again, I appreciate you providing a service to us as residents of the city. And I look forward to you directly to the information. Thank you.
My name is Angela Twiss. I'm on Woodbury in Royal Oak. I, uh, would like the commission to rethink having the dream cruise this year with all of the COVID. Um, worry that's going around with those of us that live close to Woodward, especially thirteen and Woodward. Uh, our streets are always extremely full of people that whole weekend really. And it just will not be able to be safe and keep our community and our neighborhood safe from, um, the virus and such. I know that it seems a ways off, but it really isn't. And I would like the city to please think of the neighbors in the area that are going to have to be exposed to all of those. Hundreds, thousands, millions of people. And it really is not fair to have us have to endure that. Um, I'm not sure if you could, uh, consider putting. Um, blockages at the end of our streets so that people cannot come down it. Um, but that would be greatly appreciated. Also, um, it already is quite a big problem. Every weekend there are people out on Woodward. They are loud as can be. Um, we can't even have our windows open. So if we could look into doing something about that as well, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
My name is Sean. I'd like to understand what the commission in the city is going to be doing about the marijuana smoke. Um, for people that smoke outside. I have a four-year-old daughter and we play in the backyard on her swing set. Always smell the smoke all day long from all angles. When I walk down the block by the bike, there's this faint smell of marijuana throughout the whole city. This is something that definitely needs to be addressed because the quality of light in Royal Oak is really affected. To the point there, we actually are considering moving away to avoid this marijuana smoke. Thank you.
My name is Alex Kringsen and I live on Cooper Street, Cooper Avenue. And I would like to know what steps the city is taking to, uh, deter the non-essential travel on Woodward. By the noisy cruiser cars that are drag racing. And they have cars that sound like they're exploding and shooting off machine guns. And it's been noisier this year than it has in the past ten years. And, um, unbelievably so since this is a, you know, we're in the midst of a national emergency. And they shouldn't be driving out there and I would like to know what the city is going to do to stop that. Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor Fournier, that concludes the public comment that we received tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Schwanger, and thank you for everyone who took time out of their day to call in and, uh, provide us your input and thoughts and questions. Um, I do know that a number of the calls are related to the dream crews and we do have an update tonight on special events. Uh, in our community and, uh, we can answer some of those questions, uh, in general, but related to the events, uh, particularly at that time. That brings us to item number seven, which is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? The motion by Commissioner approved, second by Commissioner Dubach. Uh, is there a discussion on the agenda? Okay, I'm not seeing any discussion, so I'm going to call for a vote. We'll start with Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Labasser?
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush voted yes. Uh, Commissioner Dubach?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So we have an agenda. That brings us to item number eight, which is the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to discuss anything on the consent agenda? Commissioner Labasser?
Item eight.
Item H. Anybody else? Okay, the consent agenda now consists of the city commission meeting minutes for April twenty seventh. Claims from May fifth and May eighth, approval of purchase orders, police department annual report. Uh, contract modification, England Civil Oak Savannah Habitat Restoration Construction at Norby Oaks Park. Word of contract for janitorial services, uh, first building's approval of easement with Grand Truck Western Railroad at South Main Street. Second extension of prohibition of marijuana establishment, second reading. Approval of the extension of interim city management appointment. Receive and file the non-action items, which is the April twenty twenty investment report. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Douglas, supported by Commissioner Perush, uh, discussion on the consent agenda. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. I'm going to start with Commissioner Douglas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dubach?
Aye.
Mr. Macy?
Aye.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Labasser?
Yes.
And I vote aye. The consent agenda as presented, uh, is approved. That brings us to item H from formerly on the consent agenda. Commissioner Labasser?
Uh, thank you. Uh, the reason I asked to pull this off and I do appreciate that, uh, uh, these are a bit trying times. And it does make the job of our engineering department more challenging. Uh, however, this would seem to be a public works contract in excess of twenty five thousand dollars. I do believe that should go through the, through the bidding process and that's my concern here tonight.
Yeah, I see Ms. Donahue is online. Ms. Donahue, uh, any thoughts or, um, comments related to that?
Sure, uh, so this project, um, this is resurfacing of the parking lot at the senior community center. Um, in terms of the projects that we tend to put out in the engineering department, it's pretty small. Um, and a little bit under two hundred thousand dollars. Um, and honestly, this was something that kept kind of getting pushed to the back burner. So we could get our other projects out to bid, um, those larger projects. So this really wasn't ready to go until recently. Um, even if we weren't under coronavirus issues, I would still be concerned about trying to bid it this late in the season and getting good prices. Um, but especially now that we have contractors who are already behind schedule, who are already booked up for the summer. And probably going to get delayed into next year. Um, I was really concerned that we wouldn't be able to get a good contractor or good prices. And that we would end up wasting, you know, a month to bid it, another couple of weeks to get it on a commission agenda and then get them started with the work. So, um, with that in mind, we approached the contractor that's already going to be in town this year, uh, doing asphalt resurfacing. Um, Ajax has done it for us for a multitude of years and they've done a really good job and they're really reliable. Um, so I know the product we're going to get out of this and the price they gave us was very fair. Um, actually a little bit lower than I thought it would end up being. So that was good news for us. Um, so with all that in mind, we decided to put it on the agenda for hopefully your approval.
This is Donahue, just for clarity, um, the original contract with Ajax had been bid out, correct? And you're just saying, hey, we're going to take the pricing and what you quote and just add a little bit extra scope of work to it. And when you check the math, it actually was better than what you had expected. Um, but you just did an extrapolation of a very large paving contract that we already have in place with Ajax, correct?
That's right. Ajax, uh, was awarded a contract in twenty nineteen, extended into the twenty twenty season. And then this would be another contract modification on top of that.
So, so no difference if I was getting my driveway poured and I said, hey, can you go, you know, give me a quote? Can I just add to my driveway this little square of sidewalk I want replaced or something like that?
That's a similar analogy, yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, I saw, uh, Commissioner Dubach with his hand up. Commissioner Dubach?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I was actually, I think I was just going to go along that same train of thought as you. This project was properly bid out for much larger work and that we're just tacking this on. Um, and, um, Ms. Donahue, is it your professional opinion that we would? Would we get a price competitive with this price or would it be more likely to come in much higher? For such a small job while things are really backed up right now?
I think it would be higher because of, like you said, it's a smaller job. Um, and also Ajax was very clear, like, I'm giving you this price because I'm already here in town and I don't have to mobilize again. I'll do it when I pave the other streets.
Okay, thank you. I, I, yeah, I feel like our fiduciary responsibility requires that we take, you know, context into consideration. When there's a clear situation where we've got a very good price from a duly bid contract, I have no call moving forward. Motion by Commissioner Dubach, is there a second or, okay, we have a second by Commissioner Perush. Uh, any other discussion? Commissioner Perush?
I'm over at the senior center, at least before we had a shutdown, um, regularly enough basis to understand the condition of the, the parking lot itself. And it's really deteriorating. Um, and most of the people who are walking in that parking lot are seniors. And I think it's a, it's an accident waiting to happen. We haven't had one already. So I think even the idea of pushing this back even further and waiting for another bid process to come in. Really is not in the best interest of the people who are going to be using the building once it reopens again. Um, it is overdue for repaving. Um, there are certain areas which are frequently blocked off because they're deteriorating in such a way. Um, and I think it's a safety hazard. So I think the, the sooner we can get this done, the better for everybody that uses that building. And if Ajax is willing to do it, they are a premier contractor. Uh, we've had extraordinary work from them in the past. And if they're willing to do it at the prices that they gave us before, then to me this is an overer.
Anybody else? I'll just say, Ms. Donahue, thank you. Uh, seems like a really smart play here to not only, uh, save us money. But also, you know, make it convenient for the amount of effort we have to put in as well as, you know, most importantly, get that lot paved. To protect our seniors that are going to the, the, the senior center. So I appreciate the, uh, the effort here and the ingenuity to, to make something good happen for everybody involved. So appreciate it. All right, I'm going to call for the vote. I'm going to start, uh, with Commissioner Labasser.
No.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubach?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
And of course I vote yes. Okay. That brings us to item nine on tonight's agenda, which is the request for refund of class C license fee Town Tavern, one sixteen, Fourth Street. And Mr. Gillam, I believe that will be you, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. A little over three weeks ago, I received a disappointing email from Bill Roberts, who is the president of the corporation that runs. The Town Tavern over on Fourth Street. I provided a copy of that for the commission and for the public as part of the posted agenda. But, uh, Mr. Roberts indicated that, uh, his business had closed down pursuant to executive order. Um, in the middle of March, that they initially attempted to do some carryout business, or I think one night. Uh, but they abandoned the, the carryout end of the business. He had since reviewed all of his business options there at the site. And at this point has already made the decision that the restaurant will not be reopening. Once the governor lifts the stay at home and other restrictions. So, um, that's sad news, but, uh, Mr. Roberts has asked that the commission consider refunding. His one thousand dollar class C license renewal application fee for the twenty twenty one licensing year. There are arguments, I think, can mean be both, both for and against his request. Um, I've not provided you with a specific recommendation, but I have provided you with, uh, a resolution. Whether you choose to grant the request or whether you choose to deny the request. If you have other questions, I'd be happy to try to answer.
I want to have any questions for Mr. Gillam. Mr. Macy?
Um, you said twenty twenty one. What is exactly the length of the time period this license covers?
Um, the licensing year for a liquor license is different. It's not a calendar year cycle. Um, the licensing year actually goes from, uh, May one until April thirtieth of the following year. So, um, that when I talk about the, the twenty twenty one licensing year, it's for the licensing that would have started. There actually as of May first of this year, as of about ten days ago and would run through the end of April next year.
Commissioner Labasser?
Uh, with regard to the thousand dollar fee, uh, I presume that correlates with. An approximation of the service provided by the city to the licensee. Can you describe what those services, uh, are and to what extent those services have already been provided?
Um, well, the, the fee that's charged is largely for purposes of the request for renewal of the license. So that involves the police department going and compiling a record check of any calls for service at the business. Um, you may recall that when we do our class C license review, there is a list of any and all calls and reports that are provided. To you as commissioners for purposes of the review. Um, any other background information that the, uh, police department has to obtain for purposes of the, uh, renewal. So given the fact that the renewal has, process has been completed for the twenty twenty one class C license year. Um, those services have already been provided for the police, by the police department.
I'll just add that, you know, Bill also owns several other, you know, high-quality restaurants, uh, as part of his group as well. And, um, you know, I know this was a difficult business decision for him to make. Um, I think, you know, in my opinion, um. You know, I get where he's coming from as far as, hey, it's May first really, but this is the first meeting that we've had in May. He decided not to open. And, you know, I get the request and I think that, um, you know, we should be looking at every opportunity to help businesses that at least have an opportunity to continue. And while Town Tavern may not, uh, there may be other opportunities down the road. But I'd also like to ask Mr. Gillam, you know, have there been any other inquiries from any other restaurants? Um, that, you know, may want to be afforded the same, um, you know, that might be a temporary closing for a year or. Or, you know, calling it quits for good. Uh, have you received any other requests?
We haven't received any other requests relative to the license application fee. Um, we have received some requests relative to the sidewalk cafe license fees. Um, in fact, there's a recommendation that's been brought forward, uh, by the DDA, from the DDA. With the commission to consider waiving those fees for this year. And we're actually going to have that recommendation on our agenda for next week's regular meeting. But no other requests in terms of the, the renewal fee that, that Bill Roberts was talking about here, no.
Commissioner Perush?
Um, is it an all or nothing thing? Could we, if we wanted to agree to give back half? Or another portion of the fee? Or it, it, does it have to be a thousand dollars or nothing?
Well, the request is for the full one thousand, but I think it's a, an issue that the commission has discretion on. If you feel it would be more appropriate to prorate and refund part of the fee, I think that's a decision that you have the authority to make.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Macy?
Uh, I'm just wondering about fairness to the other restaurants. So the other ones that just, that are sticking it out and staying here, we're elope. Had to pay this money too and are now having to eat it. And then we have someone who's decided that they can't make it work and are leaving Royal Oak, although they have other restaurants open around the area. Um, and if we refund a thousand dollars to someone who decides to leave Royal Oak, the people who stay here. Mightn't they come forward and say, well, could we have a deal because we're not able to do our liquor sales for this year? I mean, are we opening the door here to everyone to say this isn't, this isn't fair? You're basically paying. I mean, are we opening the door here to everyone to say this isn't, this isn't fair? You're basically paying someone to leave the city when here we are staying and not getting that benefit?
Yeah, I think every situation is, is somewhat different or is unique, but an argument could be made that you would be setting a precedent, yes.
Or is the option to say that, you know, anyone that is closing their doors or, you know, um, you know, you prorate it by month for the year, you know, as a matter of policy? I don't know. I don't know. I mean, I get Commissioner Macy makes a lot of good points. I do like the idea of, just in general, finding relief opportunities for the ones that are, are businesses that are staying. I don't know always what the best vehicle to do that is. You know, obviously you can give money through different grant programs that we're seeing through the DDA, and then there's relief and payment extensions on a whole number of things. But I see Commissioner Dubak with his hand up.
Um, yeah, I, I think I agree with Commissioner Macy's concerns that I'm sympathetic to the business owner, sad to see them go. But if we're going to waive this fee for someone that's going, I don't know how those that are staying and really working hard to, to see this through wouldn't have the right to ask for the same thing. And we're not really in a position to be, you know, covering eating costs like that either. You know, we have to be cognizant that we might, you know, be feeling a pinch here as well. So I think we need to identify creative ways to help the businesses that remain, but I, I don't think I'm comfortable providing this refund, just, you know, as much as I understand why the ask was made.
Commissioner Douglas?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to, um, um, uh, deny the request for the refund.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I take Commissioner Lavasser's point. The work of renewing the license has already been done. I mean, that's what they pay for with their license fee. And, and absolutely, I also agree that we shouldn't be treating somebody who's leaving the city more preferentially than somebody who's staying. But to me, the, the cost of the fees is the overwhelming argument.
Commissioner Lavasser?
My concern has to do with how, how the $1,000 was calculated and, uh, my, my understanding of, of our requirement here is that it's, it's to be some approximation of the, of what we anticipate our cost would be in doing the research involved. And I'm wondering, when was that last reviewed? How was it determined that $1,000 was the appropriate fee to charge? Uh, I, I don't know whether that, that is an appropriate fee for the amount of services provided by the city or not, but I'd like to get some insight into that before making a decision.
Well, I don't have- Commissioner Lavasser, we do review our fees on a regular basis, but I'll let Mr. Gillum answer that question.
Yeah, I, I don't, I'm sorry. Yeah, I don't have specific information as to, to when that fee was set, but the fee is set by a resolution of the City Commission. That is information we could get for you if you wanted, Commissioner Lavasser.
And, and-
Specifically what can be was set.
And Mr. Gillum, by law, just like with the building department permit fees, that one's usually a little bit more volatile, right? Because you either have booms in construction or lulls in construction. You know, but with all our fees, I mean, by, by code, we can't charge more than what the services that are rendered based on a calculation. That's why we have staff review those fees from time to time, right? And then make proposals to say, hey, it got less expensive because we got a WizBank software. Or it got more labor-intensive because we have 30 other requirements we have to look at. But that process is something that we look at on a, um, I would say, I mean, we look at the fees annually, but, I mean, we're, we're trying to make sure that we uphold that sort of rule of thumb, so to speak, or, or in some cases, law.
That's, that's correct, on a regular basis, because fees are meant, as everyone has indicated, to cover costs, not to generate profit for the city.
Anybody else? Yeah, I'll just add, um, yeah, I get where Mr. Roberts is coming from for sure. Um, and I get the points that my colleagues are making as well. And I think, you know, that's why we have two resolutions in front of us here. You know, I think one thing, though, is we have to look at is, you know, looking at this as a one-off is always a little bit more challenging. I think that if this becomes you know, what we do with liquor license fees, I think is maybe perhaps a bigger discussion we need to have for these application fees. If it's something we want to use as an economic tool, what does that mean for people that are leaving? What does it mean for people that are staying? It's a little bit difficult to make that decision in a vacuum with just one particular petition. So maybe down the road, if there's something the city does, you know, collectively that, you know, without any sort of partiality, you know, affects all of our applicants, then I think that maybe is a better context to look at this in. So Commissioner Douglas?
Mayor, I think it's in our strategic plan to review our fees. I'm not sure when we were going to do that, but that is an intent of the commission.
Mr. Gillum?
Mayor, just wanted to add one other comment to, um, in, in terms of the scheduling of this item, I did give Mr. Roberts the option of having this request on tonight's agenda or on next Monday night's agenda. He chose tonight's agenda. Ms. Schwanger had sent him a, the invitation to join the meeting this afternoon, and I don't see that he has actually joined the meeting tonight. So anybody was wondering if he knew whether or not this was gonna be on the agenda tonight. Yeah, he and I had traded emails and he was notified that it was gonna be on the agenda tonight.
I'll just add that, you know, Town Tavern's gonna be missed. Lobster Nachos there, goodness gracious. You know, that's gonna be, I, I mean, the quality of food, Mr. Roberts does an excellent job with his restaurants. And, you know, we really hope that, you know, when we get through all of this, he continues and thinks of Royal Oak to bring back, you know, Town Tavern or one of his other, um, uh, restaurant themes to Royal Oak. He certainly does an excellent job. And Town Tavern will be missed by many in this city. It was truly a point of pride for our community and, um, you know, these are really tough times. We understand. So with that, I'll call for the vote. I'll start with Commissioner Lavasser.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to make one more comment before we called for the vote, if I may.
I'll allow that.
Thank you very much. Uh, for me, it's premature to say yes or no here. Because I would like to have greater insights as to how the fee was calculated, how much of that fee has been, the service has already been provided by the city. Uh, the $1,000 seems like a lot simply to do the type of review that we did recently, but perhaps, uh, our chief could comment on that. And I, I would simply like to have that information before I say yes or no, one way or the other. I'm not prepared to support this motion. I would not be prepared to support the other motion tonight.
I'll just add that the question isn't about the fee that's in the request. The question is, uh, so the, the petitioner is not debating the fee, just whether or not it should be charged. And so I'll say that's the question on the table right now. So I will call for the vote, uh, since the motion's on the table. Commissioner Lavasser?
No.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so, uh, that concludes that. Which will bring us to our last scheduled agenda item, which is the special events update report. I see forearm of Chief O'Donohue turning on his camera. Chief O'Donohue?
Uh, yes, uh, Mayor, City Commission, I just wanted to provide an update of where we're at with the special events. Uh, in, in my memo, I mentioned that we have three events that have been canceled, the Royal Oak Bloom, the Run for the Ribbon, and Memorial Day Parade. We have three events that have, are basically going virtual. The, it's the mom race, the Memorial Day Ceremony, there'll be a live feed of a small ceremony, and then the Run with the Police 5K. The three events that have requested to be rescheduled, Art and Fire wants to move from June to August 8th and 9th. Metro Times Blowout wants to move from June 5th and 6th to October 2nd and 3rd. And then the Rock and Ride, which is scheduled for, I, I, uh, around, um, 4th of July, uh, wants to move to September 25th to 27. Events that intend to continue on as scheduled, Shakespeare in the Park, Gildes Club 5K, Oktoberfest, and Jolly Pumpkin 5K. Those are a little bit later in the year. At this time, Art's Beats and Eats is planning on moving forward with Art's Beats and Eats, uh, while working to ensure the festival is held in a safe and responsible way. John Witz has been in discussions with the police department, state health officials, and other major event planners to ensure he's up to date on the latest and best practices of events of this type, and will make whatever necessary and prudent changes are. He, he may have to, as more information becomes available. I, I, I think, uh, you know, to sum up, we, we just don't know where we're gonna be at Labor Day, so we're keeping an eye on it, but the idea is we want to try to still hold it if, when I say we have been, uh, the, the, uh, Mr. Witz still wants to hold it, if, if we can hold it. Finally, uh, you know, the big question is, uh, the Woodward Dream Cruise. You know, I say there's no decision has been reached yet. That's, it's probably not the best vernacular to use. I, I've talked to some, uh, police chiefs in south, the south end of, uh, the county. There seems to be a consensus that we, we really should try to dial it back to the degree we can. You know, there, there's the, our ability to like keep people from driving on Woodward is very limited. But, um, some of the special events that we do, questioning whether or not that's gonna be a good idea, particularly the city renting out Memorial Park. On that same note, you should consider that there are, there are communities or, uh, businesses on Woodward, you know, particularly bars and restaurants that have really, really taken ahead. And once they're able to open back up, they're gonna be exploring opportunities to do things that are maybe unique, and maybe we wouldn't even consider in a different era, like expanded outdoor service areas into their parking lot. And, um, although I, maybe not allowing something specifically for that weekend, just that weekend, I think you're gonna see some requests to do things outside their plan of operation to, to do more outdoor activity. So, uh, I, there's really no resolution, but I just wanted to put it out there for your comments and get some feedback as we have discussions with these communities moving forward.
Uh, Commissioner Dubak had his hand up?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, um, so I, I, I appreciate that, uh, you know, we're, we're not trying to be hasty, but I think we do want to receive you know, public and, uh, public health and safety first and foremost in our minds. I know that, that that's how you operate. So do we have for each of these kind of a, a hard stop date by which if we're pulling the plug? So right now, you're saying Art's Beats and Eats, you know, they're continuing to look at it, hoping they can do it. But there must be a date at which, like, we are gonna know, like, we're pulling the plug.
Uh, yeah, we, we would have, I, I would, I mean, I don't want to speculate at Art's Beats and Eats because there's a lot, there's a lot of moving parts, but I, I think we'd know by midsummer. This isn't gonna be a, a couple of weeks out, and then we're gonna have to make a decision. You know, and the idea is a whole that, because we don't know, you know, is, is a possibility to kind of push it back, maybe if, if that's possible. You know, we just don't know where we're gonna be. So, um, as far as Art's Beats and Eats, we approve about, I think it's about 65 special events for, I'm sorry, for Woodward Dream Cruise. We had about 65 special events we approved. Normally, we require those to be in 60 days before the event. We haven't even opened the application process. It'd be something that would be a challenge to gear up for and then gear back down because that requires a lot of city effort. You know, in, in, in processing. Art's Beats and Eats is different in the fact that it's all John Witz has got to do all the work. We gotta be ready for it, but they, they've got to do all the work process of special events. So, even though they're kind of close together, I think they could be looked at quite differently on how we, how we want to move forward.
Well, I guess I'm, I want to make sure that it's clear to the community that, you, what we're saying right now is not that Art's Beats and Eats is on, but that we are still, the possibility is still being looked into. And that, I, I guess it would be good to know that we're gonna have a formal decision by such and such a date. So I don't know if that's a conversation we can have with Mr. Witz. Um, you know, being, you know, optimistic that we can do it, but if, if it's not in the public interest, if it's, if it's not safe, then, then we won't do it.
Well, if, if, if we can't do it in a way that's, um, safe, we're, we're, we, we, we're not gonna do it. I mean, I can tell you that. I don't want to put a date, I don't want to say a date today. I, I've got a date in mind, but I'd like to talk to him about that. There's things like sponsorships and things like that he's got to work out, but there are so many moving parts with Art's Beats and Eats. We're, I, I think we're gonna know by midsummer whether or not this, if this isn't gonna happen, if we're not in a more normalized place um, by midsummer, I, I doubt it will gonna happen, so.
Right. Like, for example, you know, we know that we're not doing our, our usual Memorial Day parades, because we've gotten to that point where we're able to say that that's not happening. It'd be helpful to look at this list and understand that there's a date by which we'll know or that, you know, the entity will know that we don't think that we're gonna do it. I'm not saying you have to give that answer right now. It'd just be good to have a rough idea of that for, for our knowledge and for the public's knowledge and, and for the promoter's knowledge.
Well, I, I can tell you, we have a rough idea. I'm not comfortable saying it publicly, because I don't know. So, we, we do have that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Perush?
I have a question about Dream Cruise, and then I also have a comment about Shakespeare in the Park. Um, in terms of Dream Cruise, it's not only the city of Royal Oak and the municipalities that are along Woodward that are involved with it, but it's also other, um, law enforcement agencies, like the Sheriff's Department and the State Police. Have you talked to those other eight, um, law enforcement agencies as to how comfortable they are going forward and planning for this? I, I guess in terms of whether or not they would think they would have available manpower, because they might be under furloughs, and so on and so forth. And have you talked to other, I'm assuming you've talked to other law enforcement agencies about this so far?
Uh, yes, I've talked to the south end communities, um, Birmingham, Bloomfield, Berkeley and Ferndale primarily. Um, we're all kind of, you know, we, we really don't, we're not optimistic that this thing's gonna be able to happen, I guess, is where we're at from a law enforcement perspective. Ultimately, it would be a city commission decision on what we want to do with the special events. The degree we can stop Dream Cruise is how we control our special events. Whether or not a bunch of people show up and want to watch at Cars that Weekend, I, I think we would dramatically reduce the crowds if we didn't have the special events. Um, the State Police, they, they, they play a supportive role. They, they don't really have a, a dog in this fight. I mean, they, they're, um, i- if, if, if we need help, they send us help, and if, if we don't, they don't. And then the, the sheriff, uh, is kind of in a unique position because they, uh, police the city of Pontiac. And, um, I haven't had, uh, in-depth discussions with the Sheriff's Department yet on what, if anything, they're gonna do, but I, I suspect they're gonna kind of wait and see where Pontiac is and what, and what the leadership of Pontiac wants to do. I don't want to speak for the sheriff on that.
Okay. In terms of the Dream Cruise, um, I just happened to have run into Ed Nahat, who's the Executive Director of Shakespeare in the Park, or Waterworks Theater Company, last week. And their board is meeting tonight at the same time that we're meeting to discuss, uh, what they're gonna be doing this summer. He recognizes, and their board recognizes, that it's really hard to put on a Shakespeare play with the sword fights and the kissing and depends on what play you put on with the social distancing. You, you really can't do Shakespeare with people standing six feet apart or more. Plus, you've got the consideration of the, the crew, the, the costumers who are in the tent putting you on your costumes and builders and props people and so on. So they recognize that if they do anything this year, it's not going to look like what they did last year or the last period of years. But they're not really sure what to do yet and how to transform it and perhaps keep it going in some form or another. So I imagine we'll be hearing from them relatively soon as to what their, um, plan is for Shakespeare in the Park this year. Um, but they recognize that, uh, they're probably not going to be able to do the same type of performance that, that we're all accustomed to. So I anticipate that we'll be hearing something from them relatively soon. Um, I anticipate that we'll be hearing something from them relatively soon. Um, once they figure out what they what they want to do, so that's that's just an update about Shakespeare in the Park, it's not. Definitely going forward, it's they're in transition too.
I saw Mr. Gillam wants to chime in, and then Commissioner Douglas.
Oh Mayor, thank you, um, couple things to follow up on Commissioner Perush's comments about Shakespeare in the Park. Um, Mr. Filipski and Mr. Fadeli and I, we've all had conversations. Um, with Mr. Nahat about it, and and yet he does have concerns about their ability to go forward um. To be candid, we also have concerns now, um the three of us, Mr. Filipski, Mr. Fadeli, and I. Uh, talked this afternoon for a period of time about whether or not we're gonna be having any events go forward in any of our parks for the summer. Uh, many of our neighbors have already made the decision, cancel their parks and recreation programs for the summer. And uh, we haven't made a final decision on that, but that's definitely the way that we're leaning. Um, and we're thinking that we'll probably have a a formal report or recommendation that we can bring back to you at next week's city commission meeting. Then in terms of of Arts Beats and the, I'm sorry, in terms of the Dream Cruise, to follow up on on the chief's comments. For roughly the last month or so, a month or, we we've had weekly city manager conferences via Zoom. And we've been talking a lot recently about. The Dream Cruise, when I say city manager conferences, it's the six or eight of us communities in southeastern Oakland County. And I think it's safe to say that pretty much across the board, every one of the managers in each of the southeast Oakland communities. Ferndale, as the chief mentioned, um Berkeley, um Huntington Woods, Pleasant Ridge, Birmingham. Um, the managers are all um opposed to the Dream Cruise going forward this year. I think there's a recognition that, as the chief said, there's a limit to our ability to keep people from cruising per se. But that to the extent possible, uh the community is involved should be doing everything they could. To prevent the special events that go along with it for reasons of public health. Mr. Fadeli is our representative to the uh to the Dream Cruise Board. Um, he's still with us tonight, I know that they had a meeting this morning, John, maybe you can provide everybody with an update as to where. The Dream Cruise organization stands, please?
Uh, yeah, so I had a meeting with them um this morning with the with the whole board. Uh, their intent is to still run the Dream Cruise, um but pro providing in June. Um, I'm on the executive board, we have an executive board meeting on June first, and then we have a general board meeting on June eighth. Uh, they're hoping and planning on making a final decision by that June eighth meeting. Whether or not they plan on having the Dream Cruise. Um, there's obviously been a lot of talks with city managers and different uh municipalities that participate. Um, in the Dream Cruise along Woodward about whether or not they're gonna have their own car show events and whatnot. Um, it seems that the general consensus from the executive board is that uh the cruisers will show up uh regardless. Of the events being held, um but. To to give you any sort of date for a decision, we're looking at the the June eighth, uh June tenth timeframe.
And we know, I mean, just chief, from a like safety perspective, I mean, this is something that we're. Reactive to the crews, I mean, I know there's planning and there's all of these things that we have to do, but the reality is is. Let's un say unlike Arts Beats and Needs or any of the other events that you have here. There's usually some sort of reimbursement mechanism for our uh police work, uh and EMS work that we do to support these events. In this particular case, we got DPS putting up cones and barricades uh on our streets, we got officers managing. Um, you know, traffic flow and all of that, and that's something that isn't um necessarily uh reimbursed by the crews, correct?
We get some reimbursement, but not nearly what we put into it.
Um, which begs the question, not just in terms of public health and safety, which are always paramount. But there's also that financial question for the communities along Woodward as well, you know, where your. Dollars on public safety best spent this year in, you know, a climate that is got uncertainty uh moving forward, we. Um, you know, have to look at, you know, those avenues and um, you know, ensure that we're um spending our money wisely. And I think that um it's gonna be interesting, I know a lot of people had, just since we're on this topic real quick with the uh Woodward Dream Cruise. A number of people had concerns about um the the itself and the loud sounds and all of that, and I know we went back and we altered some of our. Nuisance and noise ordinances to address some of those concerns, to arm our officers with a few more tools to help. You know, not, you know, drop the hammer on people, but help, you know, mitigate uh those situations, which was working effectively for a little bit until. A clever lawyer found a loophole in the law on uh Woodward, because it's a state highway, M one. So, uh, we want our neighbors to know that we are looking at. Alternatives to uh manage the disruption that, you know, the that comes with. You know, not just a couple of days, which is fine, I think everyone's okay with, you know, in general with a couple of days of disruption, but you know, the. Two or three months of cruising that can go on with the loud engines and everything, uh it's recognized, uh but there is limited authority on a state highway. Uh, for communities like Royal Oak, Birmingham, Berkeley, Ferndale, to address a lot of the issues uh and enforce the things that we want to enforce. Uh, to keep peace in the neighborhood, but we're not giving up, we're still looking at creative measures, but. Um, you know, the cruise itself uh is something where, like the chief said, and and city uh manager Gillam said, we can only. You know, we have about what sixty-five permits or so that we could say, hey, no special events, but that doesn't stop people from driving on the road. Cuz it's a state highway, we can't prevent them from driving on Woodward, uh and we certainly can't. You know, people wanna walk up and down the sidewalk, they're free to walk up and down the sidewalk, am I correct, chief?
Yes.
Um, we'll go with Mr. Gillam and then Commissioner Perush.
Just a brief follow-up comment on on your comments, Mr. Mayor, I've been in in contact with uh Mr. Valentine, the city manager over in Birmingham. Um, because uh not this past weekend with the weather being less than ideal for Mother's Day, but. The prior weekend, when we had the very nice weekend, um, the city of Birmingham, um they received a number of complaints. From residents along Woodward Avenue about noise associated with um the unofficial cruisers. We received some too, you heard some during public comment tonight, so the conversation that Mr. Valentine and I have had um. He and I have discussed uh reaching out to try to get through our elected representatives to get some clarification. From the Attorney General's Office on exactly what some of the language in the Motor Vehicle Code needs means. And whether or not we have some additional enforcement authority up there, um and if it turns out that. We don't have the authority that we think we need, um then we're gonna be asking our elected representatives. Consider amendments to the Motor Vehicle Code, it would give us the type of authority that we need. So, we hear the complaints, we're aware of them. There's a limit as to what the police department can do, I know the chief O'Donoghue has talked with Chief Lemmons in Birmingham. They're trying to coordinate their efforts, um but we're also working behind the scenes. To see if we can get them any any more authority than what they already have, either by way of the Attorney General's Office. Or by way of the state legislature.
Thank you, Mr. Gillam, and we know you guys are working hard and it's a tricky situation to navigate, cuz it's not just. Writing an ordinance or enforcing an ordinance, it's working with other political entities or governmental entities to to see what what we can do. Quick question, follow up on Arts Beats and Needs, just while I got the the floor here, um. Clear for anybody that's watching that um, even though we, you know, help manage that event from a permitting perspective. That still has to fall under the guidelines of what the state allows. And what the county will allow for events, it's not the only event occurring in the state of Michigan uh or in Oakland County. So, you know, there is, it's not just the city of Royal Oak, it's, you know, for this event to even happen, it has to be permitted. Um, by the state and by county regulation and rules. Um, is, I mean, first off, before we even have any say in this, am I correct in that analysis, Mr. Gillam?
Absolutely correct, yes.
Okay. Which makes it even more uh fun to deal with compressed timelines, cuz we have to wait for those entities to figure out what they're gonna do, and then we gotta wait for. You know, the event organizers, whether all of these events we see here uh in this list that. Chief O'Donoghue put together, and and of course, Arts Beats and Needs, and then police department has to. You know, be in agile to to support or not support based on the condition, so it's uh pretty fluid. Um, do we have any, okay, Commissioner Perush, I'm sorry, I missed you there, I have it in my note here, I'm sorry.
That's okay, um, I know we can't reasonably restrict the drivers that go up and down Woodward back to the Dream Cruise. Um, and we probably don't have a whole lot of ways that we can restrict people walking up and down the sidewalk. But there are people who take lawn chairs and and park a- along Woodward Avenue in groups. Um, and that adds to the to the, you know, event type atmosphere of the cruise. Are there ways that we could restrict people from from sitting in lawn chairs and so on along along Woodward? Or is that under the purview of the state highway department too, and we really can't touch that?
Um, i- it's a tricky question to answer, under normal um. Times, we we really try to discourage any kind of uh congregating up to a week before Dream Cruise, that's kind of been our goal. As I said many times, a lot of times, I herd cats, because. Uh, normally, all these businesses are open and and whatnot, uh. The 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 situation uh a couple of weekends ago, you know, one of the things that can be open is an ice cream shop. And there's an ice cream shop on Woodward, and when it's a beautiful day and. There's literally nothing else you can do, you don't mind waiting two hours in line at the ice cream shop, so. Um, we had lines that were legitimate for that, uh. Uh, normally, um in lots that have some fast food, you know, we don't let people sit in their cars and eat that, the food there um. If you get your food, then you gotta you gotta clear out, without you can't eat in the restaurant, so. We we have some unique challenges now, um, we're doing our best, it it is, it's one of these things where. Um, you can gear up and the weather's not good and there's nothing to do, and then uh you you get a sunny day and it's nice out and uh. It it's a mess, but we are doing everything we can um. To kind of discourage that activity, because it is, it is a nuisance for everyone uh who lives up and down Woodward and. It's not a new problem, though, this is something we've been dealing with for years, and. And I was joking, we found the nineteen fifty-four annual report from the police department, and one of the problems they had was. Uh, you know, noise on Woodward, so like. I- it's it's been a problem, it's been around for a long time, but it's it's a particular problem now.
One of the things you mentioned, Chief O'Donoghue, was about, you know, looking at creative ideas that might be coming our way. Under the context of um Dream Cruise where, um, you know, restaurants that are along the Woodward corridor might wanna put up a tent and kind of. You know, if restaurants are allowed to be open by then, you know, kind of expand their area to keep it safe and, you know. Maintain some opportunity to collect revenue to stay in business. Um, and and so maybe, Mr. Gillam, I know I we've been exchanging some emails and we've been talking to various business owners. Um, maybe just a a thirty-second update, um because I know a lot of people have, it's it's apparently on social media have talked about. You know, what Traverse City might be doing, and um I know we've talked to a few restaurant owners in town about everything from parking spots uh to expanding. Um, you know, outdoor dining, uh with the anticipation that restaurants might be allowed to be open at fifty percent capacity or something, who knows what's gonna come down the pipe, but. Um, in order to spread people out, keep them safe, and try to, you know, help them recover uh after um the shutdown. But i- if, like I said in my comments before, maybe just a couple assurances to let those business owners and let the people of Royal Oak know, we are evaluating those things. Uh, we are working with the business owners to find out what solution is right for Royal Oak, and that might be something, you know, your team might bring here to the um to the city commission.
Yeah, that's correct, um, there are um some ideas that have been floated and suggested by by a variety of different people, as you've indicated, I think. Everyone is is kind of operating under the assumption that when restaurants are allowed to open back up to the public. That their capacity is gonna be reduced, uh perhaps based upon the square footage in the establishments, like. There've been some restrictions placed in some of the big box stores by some of the governor's orders. Um, and if that's the case, then um the restaurants will be looking to pick up capacity or pick up space somewhere else. To make up for what they can't use within the four walls of their business, and so. One option would be potentially to um allow them to use the public right of way, to use the sidewalk. Although we do have a lot of sidewalk cafes that are already in place, and candidly, um. If social distancing limitations are still in place, most of the area within the sidewalk cafes probably wouldn't be able to be used. But then there's the idea of perhaps uh closing streets and allowing the restaurants to then use space in the streets. I I think those are things that um that from an administration standpoint, the staff standpoint. We'd be willing to look at, I ex- expect the city commission would be willing to consider that. Um, but keep in mind that you talk about other governmental agencies and other governmental levels involved, obviously, in terms of anything. The state, um, the governor through the exec- through any executive orders provides. Um, the restaurants will have to comply with that, any guidelines or orders that come down from the county health division. Uh, the the public health department in terms of food service, um, the restaurateurs would have to comply with those. But in addition to that, um, if the businesses are ones that sell alcohol, there are specific restrictions that are in place. From the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, either under the Liquor Control Code itself or the administrative regulations. Which go into a lot more detail regarding the service of alcohol, so. Uh, there's gonna have to be a lot of of flexibility and willingness to bend on the state level too. Um, before we can really consider making any significant concessions for liquor license holders. For restaurants, yeah, we have generally that don't serve liquor. Or if they didn't wanna serve liquor in an expanded area, um, we might have a little bit more discretion. But uh, anything involving the sale of liquor is gonna involve a whole nother level of analysis.
So it's not just a matter of flipping on a switch and making a decision, that we have to. There's a lot of legal hurdles with the regulation between the state and and, you know, physical dynamics in our downtown to. Or elsewhere in the community to make these things happen, so.
And and again, as you mentioned before, we're kind of at the mercy of. The authorities on the state level and the county level as to what activities they're gonna allow and when they're gonna allow them just generally.
Right. All right, well, I see on this particular agenda item, there's no uh request for a resolution. Um, so it's more of a uh update uh from Chief O'Donoghue, we appreciate you preparing this. Um, any other questions for Chief O'Donoghue? Okay. Anything from us right now, Chief O'Donoghue or Mr. Gillam?
No, I don't think so, Mayor, I I think um, based upon some of the conversation tonight, I think we will potentially have some. Resolutions to bring to you next week for more, maybe more discussion in terms of special events associated with the Dream Cruise. And then, as I mentioned before, I think we're gonna have a a recommendation to bring forward to you in terms of our parks and recreation programs for the summer too.
Very good. Any other questions from uh my colleagues? I'm not seeing any hands, so that brings us to the end of the agenda, um. I think unless there's anything for the betterment of our community, we should entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion by Commissioner Perush, we have seconded by Commissioner Dubach, any discussions on this motion to adjourn? Okay, with none, I will call for the vote, I'll start with Commissioner Douglas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dubach.
Aye.
Mr. Macy.
Aye.
Mr. Perush.
Aye.
Mr. Levaser.
Yeah.
And I vote aye, we're adjourned, thank you, everyone, for tuning in, and remember, if you need anything, two four eight, two four six, three two zero zero, take care.